Call the school committee to order Thursday, February 9th, 2023. First item of business is regarding our statement for recording.
Good evening. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. By participating in this meeting, you understand that the recording could contain your video stream or your audio stream, including images of yourself or anyone in the room with you. If you choose to enable your video or audio device during the meeting, as well as anything or anyone else that may be in the background could be recorded. The recording could include any opinions you contribute and anything you say about yourself. On occasion, chat within the meeting could also be captured in the meeting recording. Therefore, anyone attending the recorded meeting may have aspects of their personal data recorded if they actively participate or not.
Thank you, Jessica. Calling the meeting to order, and first is roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. DeShamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willannon?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier? No, I don't see.
No, Emily, okay.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan won't be here. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Thompson? I believe she's going to join us shortly.
Okay.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mr. Jean-François? And Mr. Chairman?
Here. On our agenda this evening, before going into the main agenda, I'd like to move a couple of items out of order. So my colleagues on the school committee will support the move. I'd like to do the student advisory council first, and then do the new business for the approval of the hiking club and the DECA item as well. So if there's no objection from school committee members?
You want to do the minutes first?
No, I'll hold off, I'll come back on that. So, seeing and hearing none, superintendent?
It is so wonderful to see so many students and parents and educators here. Hi. And we have, we're going to hear from students from Ruggles Lane School with the STEM program. I think they're going to do a little demonstration for you. And then we have some middle school students who are going to give us some updates about what's happening in the middle school, and some grade 12 students, I believe, as well. So, oh, there, okay. So I'm going to ask Mr. Carlson if he would be kind enough to introduce his students and the STEM teacher.
Sure. And thank you all for having us here this evening. If you haven't met me formally, I'm Chris Carlson, principal at Ruggles Lane Elementary School. And we have four students who have been working really hard with our STEM teacher, Ms. Brown, on a presentation with something that's rather new for our STEM program. I know they kind of came into our building last summer while we were having a little bit of that STEM Academy over the summer. And I think these students have been working really hard. And we are going to be looking for some participation from school committee members. So start to get a little bit nervous now. When the time is right, they'll kind of evoke some participation from you. But I do want to kind of turn it over to our students because they've worked really hard and they're prepared. And they want to talk to you a little bit about Indie robots and a little bit of coding and some tile work with that. So I want to turn it over to Ethan and Megan and Jonathan and Ason. Come on up.
Presentation comes from the fifth grade students at Ruggles Lane. And our names are Megan, Ason, Eden, and Jonathan. We would like to start by telling you a little about one of our coding devices we use in STEM.
This is Indy. Indies are color-driven robots that allow all students to learn the basics of coding and think creatively to solve complex problems through hands-on, screenless activities.
Indy has an electric motor inside that controls the tires, and an onboard color sensor, three LED lights, and a speaker.
The Indies come pre-programmed, so it knows what to do when it senses different colors.
We would like to show you a video of some of the students from Ruggles Lane using the Indy robots.
Can you turn around and face the school committee? And let's try that again, it's a good dry run, but now we have the presentation up. Talking about it's going to make a lot more sense now. Those that go along with it.
My apologies.
All right? No, no, don't worry about it.
Absolutely fine. And just do us a favor? Go ahead, project your voice as best as you can.
Today's presentation comes from the fifth grade students at Ruggles Lane. And our names are Megan, Ason, Eden, and Jonathan.
We would like to start by telling you a little about one of our coding devices we use in STEM.
This is Indy. Indies are color-driven robots that allow all students to learn the basics of coding and think creatively to solve complex problems through hands-on, screenless activities.
Indy has an electric motor inside that controls the tires, and an onboard board color sensor, three LED lights, and a speaker.
The Indies come pre-programmed, so it knows what to do when it senses different colors.
We would like to show you a video of some of the students from Ruggles Lane using the Indy robots.
Is this on your computer? Or are you on the? Just refresh it, maybe that might work.
While we're waiting, a quick, that's all right, don't worry about it.
You, my friends, do you want to do your presentation with that while we try to get this set up? Here we go.
Oh, there we go.
It's just music, so pretend.
That's all right, well, wait. I was just going to ask a quick question from anyone of the students. Did you start this project over the summer? Were all four of you or some of you in the STEM Academy this summer?
No, we just recently started doing it.
You recently started? What did you do, as I know we're still waiting a little bit? Just helping us to understand. What happened in September and October on your STEM classes? Were you preparing for this type of perspective? Or were there other things going on?
Other things.
But can you share that? If you can remember.
Building.
Building. Anybody can jump in, it's okay.
Programming. We were.
Programming?
Coding.
Coding.
Did you guys do animation yet?
No.
Okay, no animation. Were you able to do anything outside or was everything inside?
Everything was inside.
Everything was inside. As you are, continue to develop more of this technology in doing things, are there things you're going to be able to do outside as well?
Probably.
Okay. Do you have any idea what you might be able to do?
No.
Just trying to tap your imagination, see what you think we could do, we could help. Bigger robots? I knew I'd get a smile out of you. Bigger robots?
There we go.
As you can see, all gray bubbles can use Indy's flame.
You may have noticed as the Indy drove over the different colored tiles, it performed different actions.
We would like to invite you to guess what Indy is programmed to do when it senses each color.
Would anyone like to guess what green makes Indy do?
Eat breast.
Nice try, but it makes it start. And when you do a second green tile, it increases speed.
Would anyone like to guess what yellow makes Indy do?
Go ahead, someone.
Slow down.
Nice try, but it's actually. Would anyone like to guess what red makes Indy do?
Duck.
Great guess, you got it right.
Anyone like to guess what purple makes Indy do?
Spin around?
Yes, but the term we use is celebrate an end.
Celebrate an end.
Would anyone like to guess what pink makes Indy do?
Turn left?
Turn left?
Good guess, but good job. It turns left at a 90-degree angle.
Would anyone like to guess what blue makes Indy do?
Turn right.
Nice guess, but it's actually a 90-degree left turn. No, right turn.
Would anyone like to guess what orange makes Indy do?
Very shy. It actually makes it do a left turn at 45-degree angle.
Would anyone like to guess what teal makes Indy do?
Teal.
A right turn at 45 degrees.
Good job, you got it correct.
We would like to show you how they work and explain the engineer design process. Engineer design process is a set of steps we work through to solve problems and build challenges in STEM.
Now, is there a pattern that you're doing or is this random? Now you're putting?
We planned it.
You planned it, okay, okay.
Just going to move this table so folks at home can see you because the table is blocking the view.
Ask, what is the problem? Imagine, what are some solutions? Bring some ideas and choose the best one. Create, follow your plan and work, test it out. Plan, draw a picture of your idea, nice looking material is in. Improve, what works, what doesn't work. Test it out again. Communicate, share your ideas with others, ask for your.
Indies help us learn, Indies help us learn cause and effect, pattern recognition, and understand decomposition and abstraction, all while having fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone like to try coding Indy to do something cool?
Do you two volunteers?
I'll apply.
Do you want to take two students around? How about? Would you like to try two students around or?
Henry.
I'll show them, show them what you know. Yeah. Oliver, let them show you.
Right. So you're, in essence, going to follow the steps and try something different? Is that the next procedure here?
Yes.
Beautiful.
There's more tiles in the case if you need them. But you two can talk to each other. Be on the same page, okay?
How many sets do you have of this type of robotics?
I have 18 in one school, 18 in another.
18, okay. So 36 total?
Yes. And there's two more cases in two other buildings.
Nice. Now, I have a quick question. You might have some from the school committee members as well. But I'm going to use a word called extrapolation. If you could take this model, right? This design, and extrapolate it out five times more, larger. Do you think we could get a robot system like that? That could be outside with, take, take a look at one of those tiles and go five times enlarge it? Wouldn't that be a neat robot to have outside?
Yeah.
So maybe we need to stop thinking like that. And we need your help to start using the words or understanding extrapolation. Maybe it's only a double, maybe it's only times two. But do you know that word, extrapolation? Have you heard of that word?
No.
Well, you're here tonight, and I'm going to tell you right now, there are going to be other opportunities this year to demonstrate what that means. So I, sometimes I'm an, well, I'm an idea, idea man. And I like this, I love this. I would love to see it bigger. That's all. But this is fantastic. Thank you. You are clear, concise, articulate, spontaneous. You adjusted, what?
And the robot worked.
And the robot worked. Maybe our technology didn't start off the bat, but you guys were top-notch, so.
They're a lot younger.
Anybody else of school committee members? Great job, great job. Nice to see you guys work together like you did too, that's really nice.
So, who chose the music for the video? And the reason I ask is because it was very good music. It was in tune to what you were doing. And if you do this something in the future where you choose the music, you have to think of that. You know, we didn't want to hear, you know, violins and slow music, which is good, which is good music in it on itself, but it wouldn't fit in your video. So if you're going to do something like that in the future, if you're going to make a presentation, always keep in mind, because, because music does help keep people's attention to what you're doing. So that was, that was great music for this, for this video.
Anybody else, school committee members?
Great job, outstanding.
We like to ask questions, and I'm thankful that you're not scared of them and you are doing something that's very big of you. You're presenting in a room with people you don't know, you do not know. You did very well. Are there other types of technologies that we could invest in? Meaning administrators, teachers, school committee members? Are there any other types of robots or STEM ideas that we could help with? And if you can't think now, that's okay. I'll turn it over and say, maybe bring that as a discussion, and that can be right, right back to your outline, your steps. Asking, inquiring, creating, planning, improving, communicating. We do listen, I swear we listen very well. From there, let's see if there are other things that you can bring to our attention. Would you be willing to do that? Would you be willing? So, would you be willing to investigate a little further? Chris and Ms. Brown? So now, you have picked up a new task. Is that okay? So, thank you very much.
There could be a report next month from these kids in elementary.
Be next month, two months, we'll give you a little time, we'll give them time. And I also want you to really start pushing and thinking about extrapolation because that one is a big one for all of us. This is great, this is such great technology to expose our students to. Our Quavon scholars, our students. But from there, I want you to dream and plan big and see what you want to do with this. Lastly, I know you're, what would you like to do for work possibly when you grow up? Have you ever thought about that yet?
Vet.
How about you?
I don't know, only as a business.
Beautiful. And I don't know is a fantastic thing because you have plenty of time to decide and change your mind.
I haven't thought about it yet.
That's okay, how about you?
Military.
Military, bingo. Open-minded, see what else can happen. Because think about people who designed that type of technology. They created that, didn't they? Am I right? Thank you very much. Absolutely.
Special thanks to our students and their families. We have such an awesome representation of our Ruggles Lane community here tonight. So thank you for taking time out of your personal schedules. Ms. Brown, thank you for your work with these students on this STEM project. Ms. Grantson, our assistant principal, thank you so much for your support. Ms. Newes is here as well, she said, if our fifth graders are doing something, I'm not going to miss it. So, thank you all for the support and representing us. Job well done.
All right, next we have some middle school students to share some information with us about, I think, an update of what's happening in the middle school.
Good evening.
I'm Ellie Poole. I am a seventh grade student at Quavon right now.
I'm Maddie Haley, and I'm a sixth grade student at Quavon.
What would you like us to talk about?
Open-minded, open. You start, whatever you'd like. Please tell us, well, in a way, I could, I could lead if you'd like. Can you tell us what are some of the happenings? And some of the new things? What's happening currently? And what, any new things that are starting to happen?
So, this year, something that was new is the ELA curriculum, which I am very happy with. It is a lot better than what we were doing before because you are learning like a lot more stuff now. We are getting into poetry right now. You, in this book that we're doing right now, there is different units that talk about different stuff. Right now, we are doing space exploration unit, which has different arguments, nonfiction books, realistic fiction. It goes from like lots of different types of writing. You, it gives you like a baseline of what you're doing and what you need to get done in a day. And it's much well, it's very well-planned to actually have what is happening.
So, it was a good move?
Yeah.
That ELA curriculum was?
Yes.
Put into place?
Yeah. Another thing is the science, the way that science is set up right now. So last year in sixth grade, we had one science teacher that taught full science and social studies. This year in seventh grade, we have four different science teachers that are, teach different things. One of them's physical science, one's engineering, one's life science, and then one's earth science. So, right now, I am in physical science. I've already had life and engineering. So, in life science, we talked about like a lot of different stuff, like plants, the ecosystem. We even got to go outside and explore the different, like, we went to the pond to see what's around it, the different habitat around here. In engineering, we got to do 3D printing and different electronic, different electronic softwares that we use. We use Tinkercad, which we were then able to put out and print on the 3D printers. We also, now in physical science, we're exploring chemical reactions in bath bombs. And we are, last year, they made bath bombs. So we're testing homemade bath bombs and store-bought bath bombs.
Fantastic.
We, in sixth grade, because I was just in fifth grade, you know, when we, we moved up and we have more than one teacher, which, which helps because you can get more than one learning style. So you can see the different ways teachers teach. Like our science teacher teaches much different than our math teacher would. He does a lot of Google classroom assignments and once in a while he'll, well, when it was warm out, he would have us go outside and look at the pond and try to make connections onto what we're learning. As our math teacher, she does hands-on activities a lot and tries to like get you engaged in stuff we're talking about.
Beautiful. Any questions, Dr. Allen?
Yeah, it sounds like the science is progressing very well. But I'm interested in poetry. Did you have any particular poet or poem that you particularly liked?
Not necessarily. So we have explored a lot of different authors. In all the poems, it's a different author. We never really like have a set like writer on the poem, but it could differ from like poems that were written in the 1800s all the way to the 21st century.
Have you read any Robert Frost?
I don't think so, not yet.
Whose fields are these? I think I know, his house is in the village though. My horse must think it queer to see me stopping here. He was in, he's from Vermont, but he was in Amherst and in Michigan. But his poetry is really kind of down, downward. Kind of, that's Stopping by the Field is that particular one. Why don't you take a look at that sometime, if you like poetry?
Yeah.
Anyone, any other school committee members? Anyone, any other school committee members? And I always say something, you know, thank you. Your presentations are clear, concise. And thank you for taking, one of the hardest steps to do is public speaking. And you are fantastic at it. I know it's nervous inside, but both of you are wonderful. When I picked up what you said, the reflection that you looked at learning. You talked about ways of learning from others, from other teachers. One teacher was stronger in this way, one was more on the Google, one was more hands-on, am I correct?
Yeah.
Exposure, you used the word exposure about different ways of seeing. Are, curiously, what grade?
Seventh.
Seventh and sixth, okay. If my colleagues don't mind, the sixth, Maddie?
Yep.
Maddie. Was it a good move for us to move to the sixth, to move the sixth grade to the, to the middle school?
I think so because in fifth grade, we, yes, we did learn a lot, but I feel like I'm learning more from other teachers than I would just two teachers at once because there's many different teachers and I like how we switch classes, so it gives us some, like, it gives us.
Beautiful. Your perspective on it?
So last year I was in sixth grade here. I think it was a good move because you get like more experiences than you would at the elementary school. So in elementary school, you're K through five. So you get the same experience for six years and then you get the same experience in the middle school for three years. So in the middle school, you're able to socialize more at lunch with kids more your age instead of at the elementary school. You're sitting with sometimes kindergartners or anyone like in that school. As with middle school, you can kind of find your friends. And in sixth grade, it is kind of sectioned off coming from the seventh and eighth graders, but you still do come in contact with the rest of the school. So I think it was a good move.
Good, thank you. And do you think from a maturity point of view, it helps?
Yes.
That's when I was kind of looking at the social, emotional kind of developmental approach as well. So any other comments from school committee members? Is there anything you want to ask us? I didn't expect that question, did you? Okay, not a problem, but I thought I'd ask. If you had a question, if you had a concern, is there something that we could adapt and change? We're ears, seriously. And I know you probably didn't even think, somebody would have been asked that. So is there anything that you think we could change, do better, highlight?
I don't know.
Okay. Great, and not a problem. And if you think, you know how you sometimes, when we go home, we go somewhere and go, jeez, I wish I said this or I said that. If you have something to say, you have good people, your teachers around, that would share that, to the superintendent or even to us. So thank you, fantastic presentation. And you answered and you told us what's happening in the middle school. Thank you. Now do you feel comfortable enough to come back again?
Yeah.
That's, we did our job. You did the hard part. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have our upperclassmen to tell us what's happening in the high school.
All right, hi, I'm Summer Behringer. I'm a senior at Quabin. Some things I'm involved in within the school is NJRTC, I'm the commanding officer of that program. I'm also heavily involved in the environmental club and also the AP curriculum.
Hi, I'm Becca Siegel. In the school, I'm part of a student council, National Honor Society and the Triumph Music Honor Society. And then outside of school, I just signed to continue swimming at American University.
All right, so we're going to focus on some things that we are liking in the school, looking forward to, and then also some critiques as well. So currently, I'm really looking forward to the ball and lock-in that the NJRTC has. And I like that event because it also brings in other students because all of our cadets are allowed to bring at least one guest. We also invite administrators to come as well. So for those of you who aren't familiar with that, it's like a prom, except we have military traditions scattered throughout. And then we also have the lock-in following, which the cadets and the guests stay at the school and do activities from 11:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning. So it's a really unique experience that we have, that everyone has a lot of fun with as well. Something that I've really been liking that the school has started more this year is the newsletter that gets sent out to all of the students and parents. I think it's really important for the community to be aware of what's going on in the students' lives. And I think it also helps to promote different activities that students are doing so that way they can get more support. Our favorite thing from the newsletter was seeing all the senior activities most recently. So looking forward to those because we weren't aware of them ahead of time, so.
So something that I'm looking forward to would have to be the, some of the senior activities just because it's like more of an exciting time of the year after all the testing and the AP tests and IB testing. So I'm definitely looking forward to that part of the school year. Something about the school that I currently like is the club involvement because this year it seems like we have a lot more clubs that are going on. So I'm glad that there are more clubs that are being student-run and are more supported by the staff in general.
Cool. So kind of building off of the clubs is, it's really great how many clubs there are. But with the current flex block system that we have, we found it difficult to be in more than one club since we have all the club meetings Friday during flex block. So I'm involved in environmental, but I would also really like to be on the math team and I'd also really be interested in doing the hiking club. But it's difficult for me to get involved with that since I kind of have to pick one or the other when we meet on Fridays. So if we were able to move the clubs to different days and scatter them out, I think that would really help with student participation in different clubs and help students build up their resumes as well.
And then building off of that, another thing that is currently a little bit chaotic in the school is the lunch system. So we currently have three lunches. The first one is mainly middle school and sixth grade. And then the second and third lunch are built on what class we have during C block. Well, the second lunch is a bit smaller than the third. And the second lunch, I believe we have about 100 kids and then the third lunch is about 200 or 250. So the imbalance of kids is definitely impacting the amount of time that we have for lunch because if we have to buy lunch, then we are stuck in lines for about 20 minutes and that leaves about 10 or less minutes to actually eat lunch. And then in addition, with the food, with all of the kids, there are less portion sizes. And then, so the lunches themselves are actually very small and they're not very substantial for a high school-aged kid. And then there are also less like types of food or like offerings because of mainly people get one type of lunch, which leaves less, less lunch for everybody else. And then that impacts what people are eating.
So we're open to any questions?
Fantastic. Dr. Allen, then.
Just a couple of comments. Summer, I know much better than the other young lady. She, I think we all know, is up for appointment at the Naval Academy and is meeting with, is it Senator Warren?
So not Senator Warren, but I recently received a nomination from Senator Markey and Representative McGovern, so things are looking up.
That's great. She's a terrific kid and I've seen her with the ROTC and when she was there, when she took command and so forth. And an added note, her grandfather, grandfather, has been on the school screening with me here two different times. I just saw him over at the basketball game where her dad is coaching the girls' team against Tingsboro. They were getting whipped when I left.
Oh, I thought you had a couple of things.
No.
Okay. So break, I'm kind of interested, break down the club aspect for me. So let's say if you wanted, you said like you'd like to be on the hiking club. So does one have to be like at a club meeting on that Friday? Could you be a member of the hiking clubs? In fact, we're going to vote on the Menandox trip, which I think is in May. Would you be able to be on the hiking club and go to that trip or whatever other hiking trips there are without having or having the ability to go to a Friday club meeting because you're, you're in another club? I mean, are the clubs set up where you really have to be at a specific club on Friday because you're doing something specific as opposed to saying, you know, can I bounce around like every other week, Club A to Club B, et cetera? So maybe explain that a little bit.
Right, so in regards to hiking club, I know that there's a bulletin board that sends when the next hike is and you can go talk to Mr. Haley and he'll give you a permission slip. But if you're not there on Fridays, you don't really have say in where the club is going to be and you don't really have time to interact with the different students in the club before going there, which another great thing about the clubs is getting to meet people who have common interests with you. And I think that's really important to building the school community. So I just, I find it very limiting only being able to really be heavily involved in one club when instead you could be spreading your talent and meeting more people.
Prior to the flex block, how do, how do we work the clubs?
Generally, the clubs were done, in past years, they were done whatever day was convenient for that club. So it was much more scattered, but it seemed that kids could be in more clubs because of the scatteredness of it. So like some clubs would be on Mondays, some would be on Tuesdays. Like it would be scattered throughout the week. But now it's turned to where Tuesdays are mostly academic clubs and then Fridays are, I don't know. So like, Tuesdays are more like honor society, student council, link crew with helping freshmen. And then Friday are like hiking club and I think the environmental club also meets on Fridays. So it's like, it's sectioned off by the type of club that it is and it's only on two days. So the teachers I know are working to not have coinciding meetings, but since there are so many clubs now, they are multiple that overlap.
Because I know a few years ago, I mean, when one of my sons was here, he did robotics, but that was after school. This robotics club was after school, so I would have to pick them up after school. So I was just wondering if anybody, so there's no like after-school clubs at all?
Not really because of sports and everything. It's kind of hard for students to come in because of practices. But for some clubs, I know for environmental, we meet every other Thursday after school. But you can't really get everyone in and involved because of sports or other commitments after school.
Any other questions, comments from school committee members? To Summer and Becca, all right? I got a couple. You said you're going to Washington University? I'm, uh, American University, in Washington.
Yes.
I flipped it. And you said you were swimming?
Uh, yes, so I got recruited to continue my swimming career on their Division One team.
Fantastic. Piggybacking on flex and scheduling. Were there, both seniors, you had your four years of the high school experience. Yep, two years of COVID, which is not good for any and all of us. Were there enough electives? What could have changed? And were the periods long enough? Because we continue to tweak. Administration tweaks, we tweak. And there's something that we are going to do more of and that's going to be a student voice. There is a student advisory council, there are folks. Do you have a voice on a student advisory in your high school over the years? And what was the schedule like and electives over the past four years?
So I was a part of student council my sophomore year, so that was over COVID. So unfortunately, there was a lot going on then. In terms of scheduling, something that I really missed that we had in past years was the alternating of periods every week. So each period would like shift down one on Monday and then Tuesday down another. So you'd have different teachers at different times of the day, which was, it was refreshing going to school. And it's like, all right, I have English C period, not A period, so I'm a little more awake today than I was yesterday. Whereas now it feels kind of repetitive and it, it makes it a little bit boring for some of the classes. So, and I think, aren't you guys switching to do seven periods a day or something like that?
The administration is always looking and tweaking and, but we haven't, no decisions have been made, but we're all looking at things. But the student voice, it is paramount to us. Not only just doing something for the sake of doing something. There's got to be a purpose, realistic. And as we did about eight years ago, when we added more electives, there was a reason why we went certain ways. And that's why your voice matters about change. And we want to make sure we're doing it right. One of my pet peeves, and it's okay, and do you think a longer, a longer school day with different internships and opportunities to interact with the community and other ways of cataloging learning?
I'm not really sure if that would be effective as the, right now the seniors are allowed to do, I'm not sure if it's open to juniors, but we are allowed to do internships.
Yep, yep.
So that kind of coincides with the increase in electives as you go through high school.
Okay.
So with more elective opportunities, depending on what classes you have, you're allowed to do more internships or like a longer internship. So it seems to be working out with the kids who want to do the internship. So they prioritize, they prioritize that over some of the electives that they have. So I think it's a nice balance between if you want to take an elective that interests you rather than doing an internship or vice versa. I think it's a nice balance that leaves it up to the children that leaves more independence within their learning.
Good. And then my last question is really dealing with, did you have the opportunity in high school, through your experiences, to develop relationships with teachers? In other words, helping, mentoring, supporting, coaching? Did you have opportunities for that? And was and is the curriculum rigorous enough?
So addressing the teachers, I would definitely say yes because with the communication that I've had with multiple teachers, they've helped me with multiple aspects of my life. They've helped me with just grow as a person in general. They've helped me with my education. And then some of them have gotten to know me so well, they were helping me with my recruiting and just everything that was going on with my life. And then as far as the curriculum, I do think that with the AP and IB curriculum, it could definitely be a little more vigorous.
Okay.
So I'm an IB diploma candidate. There were some courses on the course catalog that were supposed to be offered, such as HL Math. So that's the higher-level math course that's more vigorous. It was on the course catalog and it should have been offered to be run. I signed up for it and I was told that it was not offered or that it wouldn't be run. And so me and my teacher were working to try to have it run. We were having more like discussions on what opportunities it would have and we were, and I was told that it wasn't possible. And then in addition, my Spanish class, it is currently an HL Spanish class because I completed all my SL Spanish classes. And we have to do three trimesters in order to get the diploma. So I am currently in an HL Spanish class this trimester and there are three of us in the class. And it is taking, it's taking course during an SL Spanish class with about 20 kids in it. So I am currently in the hallway working on all my courses.
Right, so that's interesting because I'm in that Spanish class.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm an HL student for Spanish, I'm an SL student. But I definitely, I pity you. We're in there, we're doing our regular curriculum. They're in the hallway working on their HL, which I don't think is fair for those students. I'm not involved in the IB program, I'm involved in AP. So last year I took AP Language and AP History. And this year I'm doing AP Calculus, AP Literature and, what's that, AP? AP Physics, which is the online physics course, which is interesting. I'll get to that. So for AP, I feel like the courses are definitely very rigorous and it really depends on how many APs you're taking. I have a very rigorous academic year with the three APs. Something interesting about AP English was last year for AP Language, we had around 25 students. This year for AP Literature, we have four. So a lot of those students decided to move to the IB HL English because they felt that the AP curriculum was too difficult in terms of English. And it was also a scheduling issue where a lot of students had banned during that period. So they couldn't take the second year of AP English, which a lot of students.
so they couldn't take the second year of AP English, which a lot of students were disappointed on. And then AP Physics Online is a very interesting way of learning. I think it definitely depends on the student when you take that course. I have a friend who does AP Biology and she's actually been having to spend her own money for supplies since the supplies in her lab kit ran out. She's like, where do I find this random acid to buy that I need for a lab this week that ran out last week and I need it for a lab now? For AP Physics, I've found that the time provided for the online AP is definitely not enough. There have been days where I've been working well into midnight on my AP assignments just for that one class because you don't interact with the teacher, you don't do Zoom calls, you have an optional office hours, which is every other week, but the time for mine is weird because it's at 10:00 PM since he's in a different time zone, so I can't really meet with him. And then also the time, you have to use your time to teach yourself all the physics and then do the other work that's assigned to you. So the AP VHS program, I would personally say was not the best choice, especially for STEM students this year. I think if it was for language students, I think that would have been better since it's not as much as teaching yourself as STEM is. So those are my thoughts on that.
Fantastic. Dr. Allen?
It almost comes down to, is it better to have an online course, which is clearly much more difficult to engage in, or none? And I guess I had thought that the online was better than not having it at all. What would your reaction to that be?
I would say online is better than nothing. AP is really great for colleges and getting that college credit that so many students look for and I feel like I will be well prepared going into college with time management and the rigor of my courses now. I definitely think not having it at all is not a good option because of what AP provides for the student, so.
Well, I'm talking about online rather than AP.
Right. Right, so online is better than not having AP, but having AP in person is definitely much better.
Way to go, yeah. Anyone else? Thank you again. Clear, concise, well presented and you bring us, I call it reflections. I believe being a reflect, a reflection, a reflective person. And you opened up with the word, and that's, again, we listen, critique. You used the word, we're going to have some critiques, which is beautiful. Words have different meanings and synonyms and everything else. One thing I picked up that even though 10 years ago, 12 years ago, when we went the IB route, there's got to be a better way for us to share the needed resources. And I'm even looking in our own community. Eagle Hill has an IB program. Why aren't we doing more, again, that's our, that's our world, that's our world. Why aren't there potential more collaborative efforts to meet the needs? I have a problem with, geez, a professor could be in California and he's available at 10 and, you know, you know, why couldn't it be there are a 10 and there's a 6:00 PM timeframe? There's an ABC, not that I'm trying to put it all together, it's not my world. But what you brought to us for considerations, for your understandings, because you went through that, you went through four years of the high school with the COVID perspective, we're finally out of it, we're with, in person, and the bumps that you ran into in the educational process is for us to do better. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, final comment. We had reports from the various schools and the first point of all of them is Quavon pride.
Yes.
And I have to say, the pride that I have for these two kids and all the others, what they did, their ability to stand up, present to adults, I won't say late at night, but it's late-ish. I think Quavon pride is being exemplified by you and your student colleagues and what you've done, which is quite a credit, I believe, to our administration and our teachers
Yeah.
as well as the kids themselves. Thank you, you did a great job.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're more than welcome to stay, but it's okay to leave and we're not, we're not insulting. Now, that was a very good hour.
Couldn't be better spent.
Yeah.
You know, it's a conversation we've had before, I mean, I know when we get MCAS numbers and all that, and I think, I think Dick has brought this up before of, you know, we see some MCAS numbers, wow, our grade system, we're like, geez, we think we should be better, you know, some of this stuff we throw in. I'm not a numbers guy. You see students get up here.
Exactly.
At all levels, I mean, at all levels and they articulate, they can, they can ping pong on some of the questions and answers. I mean, you were being vicious with the younger ones, but that's.
No, I'm not.
But you have to take all that with a grain of salt. People sit there and say, oh gee, how come your MCAS numbers aren't better or Wachusett does better, blah, 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 blah. You stand the student up.
Yep.
And not only are they prepared, which they should be prepared, but on a give and take, they can articulate their position.
Correct.
And to me, that is a heck of a lot more important than if they get 30 more in math and MCAS or something like that. I know we're speaking sort of individually here, but I take that always with a grain of salt when, when people start talking numbers of any kind of testing. So it's an observation.
Yeah, the potential nomination to the Naval Academy, already a scholarship swimming to American University and what? Those, I mean, that's, that's.
Speaks volumes, right.
That's great, that's great.
Thank you, Dr. I'm glad we took that out. Back on the agenda.
Move, we accept the minutes.
Okay. Is there a second? Second was Dave.
So we're going to go to the field trip?
Oh, I apologize, I forgot, I apologize. Roll me back in for a sec. I forgot part two, the votes for the trips. So the new business is request for approval, hiking club trip to Mount Monadok on Thursday, May 25th with a rain date of May 26.
Move acceptance with the usual proviso.
Second.
Any comment?
Mr. [inaudible].
Chris Sale, I'm the hiking club advisor and a math teacher at high school. I guess I'll just come up for a second. I appreciate, you know, the hiking club came up with Summer and Rebecca there, so that is a challenge that we face with the clubs. But, you know, we have restarted a hiking club, it's been alive in various iterations at the school before. We're trying, I think all of us teachers are trying to, you know, the extracurricular activities have always kind of fueled my teacher fire over the years and it's, I think we're kind of getting back to that. So we restarted the hiking club this year, we've had, you know, a good level of interest. It is hard. I think the geographic size of our district is a big hurdle for club participation, not much we can do about that. When I went to high school, there was three layers of late buses at different times of the day, just that's not feasible in today's world. But anyways, the students are excited, we've had growing involvement and we're hoping to end the year with a trip to hike Mount Monadok in New Hampshire. So, you know, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer.
We have a basic checklist for the kids to bring, flashlight, et cetera, that everybody has to, has to check off before you can.
Hundred percent, you know, we'll probably have a, you know, preliminary meeting of some kind just to make sure that people are prepared. We'll obviously bring some extra materials for those that might be a little less than prepared. Tried to build in a few extra chaperones just in case some, you know, we'll certainly, you know, ask the students to consider their experience and fitness level, it's, you can't, it's hard to go, you know, not hiking at all to the top of Monadok, but we'll, we'll have some contingencies in case some students aren't able to make it all the way to the top.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to volunteer to be an adult on the hiking trips.
All right, we'd love to have you.
I could do that too, actually.
This Sunday at 10:00 AM, we're meeting at Berry Falls Dam if anybody wants to join us.
Well, when any provisos are there, reach out to the superintendent and go the next steps, whatever needs to do, if there are volunteer opportunities for anybody in the room.
I think that's a great idea to do this. I mean, you know, a lot of us here do hiking and some of us have done mountain climbing. And I think, at least from what I've read with the whole COVID thing, a lot of people who really didn't have much interest sort of get out there and unfortunately to the detriment of some who just weren't prepared to do it properly. To me, it's very important that our kids, especially if they want to do this and this could be something they can do for the rest of their lives, you know, get, you know, sort of get, I don't want to say training, but, but get the proper coaching so that once they get out on their own, you know, they can, they can think properly for themselves. You know, I don't have to get to the top of the mountain if suddenly I've got freezing rain, you know, the last, you know, 500 yards or something and it's okay to turn back and do it again another day, reading unfortunate things that happened in the White Mountains the last few months. So I really think that, I think it's a great thing, it's, it's something that I hope catches on and we can, we can go forward years from now too.
Dave?
I follow Chris on Facebook and if you want, if you want to get an idea of his skill ability and the mountains he has hiked, I anticipate, when, when he's out hiking, I'm thinking, how did he get that far up in New Hampshire? And you go out for days.
I do, thanks, Dave, that's nice. I had the same White Mountains, unfortunately, there were some accidents.
But no, I, I just, Chris's level of expertise and experience fills me full of confidence in terms of any safety aspects that might come up with the kids because he's, all the 45s, 45,000, 4,500.
About 4,000 footers in New Hampshire.
Yeah, in New Hampshire, so.
And I've had some good teachers along the way, so I'd like to pay it forward a little bit and share that with some of our students. And, you know, some of our students that have been active in the club are very experienced hikers too and it's, it is really a truly collaborative group effort, right? You, you stick together, right? You, you can't go any faster than the slowest person and you, you adjust and we work together and we deal with things as they come up, you improvise. So I know it's not for everybody, but it is a, I think some of the challenges for today's students, I think hiking is a nice, you know, it's a nice counter to that in terms of the, the mental and physical and emotional things it can develop, so.
And I really like when, I like to vicariously reach the summit when you.
Never want to go. It may take me longer than you.
Good. And it's you?
Oh, Ms. Dean, Dean Marais, sharing a picture.
We went to Wachusett almost two weeks ago and.
Wow.
You know, we've got some, you know, I don't want to take too much of your time, but as the students were talking about the clubs, it tends to be, and this is maybe true when all of us were in school, but it tends to be that same group of students that are on the sports teams that are in the student government, that are active in the clubs. So it is a challenge to, the kind of, you know, Summer, who spoke, I'm going to get her a permission slip tomorrow, but she's involved in so many things, it is hard to do all of it, but, so we've been trying, you know, the students asked at our last meeting, could we do the hikes on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, so more of us can do it? So that's what we've been, we've been doing. This Monadok trip, I think if we do it, you know, as a field trip from school, will provide more students an opportunity to join us, right? So they don't have to, some students might not be able to get a ride to and from Quavon, so, you know, we're going to continue to try to do more local outings once a month, you know, culminating in May with this bigger trip. You know, I grew up in Hartford, Connecticut, so there's so many places in every direction. This is a beautiful area to live and there's so many places to see and explore, so, you know, I've been fortunate to have people share some secret spots with me, so I'm glad, I'm glad to, you know, hopefully get a few more students interested in that as well, so.
Good. So we have a motion, obviously with Dr. Allen's provisos. Roll call.
Um, who seconded that?
Lee.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Lannan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Van Nutter?
Yes.
And Chairman Brophy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item is a request for approval for the DECA, the Distribution Education Club of America, overnight trip to Boston for state finals, March 9th through the 11th. We, it was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago for paperwork purpose and everything that had to be done, you had to get a timeline, so tentatively approved with coming to the school committee the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve and then I have some comments.
Second.
Ned, I heard Ned's second, okay. Comment?
I found out about this about a month ago, DECA.
Yes.
I went to a basketball game and you know how on the other side of the stairs they sell candies and soda and pizza and stuff? And there was this long-haired, slim young fellow and I started talking to him and he said, you know, I gave him, and he said, well, this is going to go to DECA. What's a DECA? So he described it to me. We, and, and I had them come to the review and reform Monday. We have a business program here, they have entrepreneurship and leadership and, you know, we call it selling stuff and it just, it's a terrific program. And there were eight kids that were in this DECA club that went down to Worcester for a competition and three of them now placed high enough to go to Boston for the state competition. And if they do well there, then they go down, I think, to Orlando to international competition. And already they've asked me to come talk to, we've got a fellow named Bergman is the teacher, they've asked me to come talk to the class and be a judge next year when they, when they do this. But Teresa Salvador's son is one of the kids there, Moran, I think, is the, is that the, yeah? Moran, yeah, is, is the fellow that I originally talked to about, but this is, you know, for, for people, for small businesses around here or bigger or whatever, I think this is a wonderful program and I very enthusiastically support this. As I said, I had him come to our review and reform and talk to us and it really sounds great. Marketing, that's what I was trying to think of, marketing.
Any other comment? Need none? Roll call?
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Lannan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Van Nutter?
Yes.
Chairman Brophy?
Yes. Thank you. And we're back now on the agenda. Dr. Allen moved the minutes for Thursday, January 12th. Is there a second?
There was a second.
Mr. Marsh?
Mr. Marsh, okay. Any additions? Potential omissions? Any corrections? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Lannan?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Upstate.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Van Nutter?
Yes.
And Chairman Brophy?
Yes. Ministry of Reports, Superintendent of Schools.
So I will, I'll begin, you all have a copy of the report in the drive and Mrs. Bennett is going to put it on the screen. I just, we'll provide a brief update, strategic planning is ongoing, we are on track, although we did miss one meeting, but our facilitator is saying that we're such an efficient and effective team that we're, we're going to, we're going to meet the mark even though we're sort of a meeting behind, so we're hoping that that is, that actually happens and so we'll be, we'll be on track hopefully to have a draft to you. hopefully to have a draft to you at the March, at the March School Committee meeting. We are, I know that we're going, you're going to hear a little bit, I think, more about the website later in the meeting. So I will just tell you that we're, we're, our target date for completion of the website is, is June. You will see there on the screen on the right, we have adopted an elementary mascot. Took us a little bit longer to get, adopt an elementary Panther than our high school Panther, but there he is and we're hoping maybe we can run a little Panther cub naming contest or something with our elementary students in the near future.
He's very cute.
Give this guy a name, isn't he? He's great. And our, our elementary principals really, they honed in on exactly what they wanted and it took us a long time, but we were, they were very particular and I think they did an outstanding job. We really wanted something that would look like a younger version of our high school Panther and I think, I think it's, it's quite nice, so.
It's on point.
Cheryl and I have been meeting with, have our ongoing meetings with town officials. I met with the Hardwood Select Board end of January and New Braintree Finance, Cheryl and I met with Hardwood Select Board end of January, that was a virtual meeting. New Braintree Finance Committee on January 30th and Berry Finance Committee the, the next evening. We've really just had preliminary conversations, bringing them up to speed, what, where we are in the budget process and trying to encourage them to join the effort to support the rural schools legislation if that gains traction, which we think it may. And we are, you know, currently still have some open positions in the district. As you may know, our Hubbardston Center School Principal Jill Peterson is retiring in August and so we are, that search process has started. Nancy Landry and Mrs. Muha and others are working on that. We're also going to start to post some positions that we know we'll need. We've got retirements and some other positions that we know we're going to need for the FY24 school year shortly after the February break so that we can begin to recruit folks, particularly for hard to fill positions, with the goal to be fully staffed by late August. We haven't accomplished that goal yet this school year, so we're hoping we're going to accomplish it next school year. And that's really all I have, other than things that you'll hear about later in the meeting, I think, Dr. Allen.
Dr. Allen.
Yeah, how are we doing with the new French guy?
He's, he's doing well. He's doing well.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
So we like him?
We like all our teachers. Yes.
He's a new teacher, so.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Where's his, where's he come from?
Oh, I don't know, Colleen, do you remember?
I don't remember and I don't want to misspeak.
He comes from a private school in Western Mass and he's very much enjoying his time and immersed with the students here. This is his first year in a public setting.
Good. That's, that's different.
And just curious, well, thank you, how many years' experience of teaching?
I want to say approximately two years of experience in private school and this is his first year in public.
Thank you.
And that's all that I have tonight, so I'm going to see if Colleen would like to.
Sure, I'm going to be short, but I would really like to brag about our teachers. So I'm going to start with that. We heard a lot about our kids and I'll talk about them in a minute, but as you know, you heard we implemented a new literacy curriculum and I did not ask her to speak about that, so that was really interesting that she did. But it's been a really challenging start to the school year with teachers having to learn so many new things. So not only do they have a new curriculum, but they also have a new data system. So I know you're very familiar with our intervention system and our data meetings and how we all do that, but our teachers are constantly, I can't stress this enough, learning and learning and learning, month after month, day after day, week after week, and they're doing a great job. So they're using some new tools and one I just want to kind of tell you a little bit about because I, I didn't realize it had all the capabilities that it did when we sort of signed on for it, but they're using a new system that takes all of our data and uses a formula to produce recommended goals and action steps for our students based on different subsets. So when the teachers are meeting, they walk away from the meeting with a clear instructional focus for the students and they can accept the focus that's recommended or they can add some additional data and make adjustments for that. They also set times for progress monitoring for our kids, so we're very carefully progress monitoring our students. It is not left to sort of collection of student work or looking at, you know, shared messy sheets. We have a real systematic approach to the progress monitoring now. They're able to identify end of the year goals for individual students and it's a real collaborative process. So our teachers, our tutors, our intervention specialists, our special education teachers, our administrators have been part of it. And so far, you know, the feedback has been very positive. We had our first session yesterday with our K-1 teachers and our two through five teachers will happen next week. But some of the things that they shared out were just feelings that students were making good progress overall, that they were pleased with the idea of this new system of progress monitoring, that they'd be able to keep a closer eye on the students to make more timely adjustments and that they really felt like they had a better picture of their students' strengths and needs in relationship to learning to read. So I want to give them a huge shout out because I'm sure Kristin, Ashley and Jill is out there can tell you that it's been a lot of work and they really are just being so positive. So we appreciate that. We started our baseline assessments for our tutoring. We talked about doing this online tutoring program with some of our seventh to ninth grade students during Flex Block for the next 10 weeks. We got all of our assessments complete. I want to just thank Andrew Walsh out there because he was super helpful for us and Joe Wyman really spearheaded that and we are set to begin our tutoring on Monday. And all of our kids, not all of them, but those who qualified for tutoring will be in small groups. So three students to one live tutor, three days a week. So we are looking forward to sharing some great results with you on that.
What an intelligent, smart thing to do. That's great.
And the last thing I want to tell you about, and I hope that Mr. Deschamps jumps in here, is we had an amazing afternoon with our Innovation Pathway students. So they set up mock interviews today and so people from local businesses and Dave was there and some people from the district, we all went over and we interviewed them. So we had a series of questions to kind of choose from, different categories. It was held right at Pine Acres Campground in Oakham, which I've never been to, beautiful. And they're really looking for students to work over the summer. So for them, it was like a, a real thing. I want to say just a couple of things about our kids. As you saw tonight, I could not get over just how well spoken and self-assured they were. Looked us in the eyes, were articulate, like really, really did an amazing job. And I think the one thing that stood out to me, and I'm sure they had coaching before this, but it just is like something you can't fake, but they were really reflective about what their strengths and what their areas for growth were, like in the conversation. So it felt so authentic. I don't know if you got that from your kids or I just got like the aces of the bunch, but it was amazing.
I got the aces.
Yeah.
Until I heard Andrew Walsh next to me say, they knocked my socks off and I'm thinking, they knocked my socks off too and they were different kids, so.
Yeah.
I, I, but I didn't know why I was feeling so good when I left the place. I was feeling happy and they, they gave me so much hope and promise. There was, because they were, just what you said, Colleen, they were articulate, they were poised and there was, there was some rehearsed stuff, the handshake was.
Yeah.
Was right there. And, and they kept, they would say like, things like, you know, basically, how's my eye contact, you know? But they, once, I, I would start, we had a list of programmed questions we could ask them, but it started with, tell me something about yourself. And I had a few candidates who I, I didn't bother with this, with the script because they set it up so that I could just open-ended question them. We could have gone on for the afternoon and what impressed me was, and I guess I gotta give you the example, one student who told me she wanted to be a lawyer, an officer and a lawyer in the Marine Corps. However, now she's 16, she's a sophomore, she's also dedicated to her spiritual life and she wants to go and get a degree from a college in Bible studies, but she also wants to be an officer in the Marines. And at 16, she was able to identify the nuances that she was going to have to mitigate to get there. And, and it wasn't clear, but she understood that that was quite a bundle to manage. And, and, you know, she talked about, I'm not sure what I'm going to do first, but I want to go in as an officer, you know, in the Marines, but, but that I, I really feel compelled to go this other route as well. And I could have listened to her all afternoon because it was a story that wasn't contrived, it was authentic, it came right from the heart. And yet she was setting, that was basically a job interview, she was setting it up. And I thought if she approached anything in life with that kind of authenticity, you couldn't, you couldn't avoid not bringing her into your team. And we, we talked a lot, I talked a lot about kids, about collaboration and leadership. That was a nice lead in with her. How do you lead people? She said, you have to develop relationships with them. And she said, it can't be a bossy relationship to start with. My God, I wish there were some adults that understood that. But she knew and she, and there were, there was another young lady who wanted to be a, a pediatric nurse and it was all about, the, the kids are hearing it, that you, you get there by developing positive relationships and depending on people to help you out to get where you were going. And I was just, I, I, I thought about it all afternoon and Andrew was funny because he just said, he was the same way, it's like, oh my, he said, I'd hire any of them. Anybody that wants to work as an intern, but he interviewed.
He did say that.
So it was a very positive experience.
Dr. Campione?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I just want to touch on a couple of things. I'm aware it's getting late already. The sixth and seventh, eighth grade middle school life skills program project involved has started a bakery and it's become a big hit. I will tell you that when the delivery comes to central office, I, I hear footsteps running down the hall, the bread's here, the bread's here. So I know my husband has single-handedly eaten, I think, three coffee cakes, but we're really enjoying their hard work and really appreciate Josie Yurts leadership in, in getting that going. She's, they're selling to faculty as well as to the central office. So just a couple of teachers that I've been meeting with this week, just asking them, hey, I'm talking to school committee on Thursday night, tell me a few things that your classes are up to. So I just listed those here and you can read them, but I will, I will unfortunately talk about the compliance audit that we had this week. I know, no, it's not very romantic and exciting, but I'm glad it's over. They came on Wednesday, they entered, I had two, two hour, two one-hour interviews with them on Thursday and they also interviewed our CPAC chairperson, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And that was all the interviews they conducted. All of the principals were fabulous, they showed them around the schools, they answered questions, they did talk to some teachers and some students in some locations. They, they did in our exit interview give us some, some feedback, so we're going to wait for the report and see. I hope it's, it's going to be okay, but you know, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx myself and tell you that it was clean until I actually see it in writing. There were a few civil rights things that we need to clean up, like our bullying, we had to update some bullying language and our discipline, our handbooks, you know, needed to be updated. But I, I thank Dr. Allen and the, the Policy Subcommittee for revising all those things that we needed to because most of the things we did, we, we won't get cited on. So they did, I just want to say, compliment our schools because they just felt that our intervention program was breathing, living and breathing in each school. They saw groups, they saw a lot of small groups going on and they really did commend everyone for that. They also loved some of the space that we have. I mean, we have that beautiful space in New Braintree for our post-graduates and they also commended one of the middle high school programs on the, the floor, the SOAR program. They really loved the space and how it was in the life of the school and they felt that that was really wonderful. So those were just highlights. Again, I'm glad, I'm glad we get a break from this for a few years, but I'll share the report as soon as I get it, I'll share it with you and we can talk about how we can do better next time. So thank you for your time and that's all I have this evening.
Just a quick, quick question. Thank you for bringing up update within the world of, of the, of your, of your world of employment, but can you quickly, I know I'm just deviating for one second.
Yep.
Did you have a special trip last month?
Oh, I did, yes, I did. I was so lucky, I was able to go to, I flew to Argentina and then to the very tip, tip of South America and I took a boat, two days on the Drake Passage, which is one of those things that everyone gets sick. I did not get sick, thank goodness, those bands worked really wonderful and I was able to hike and spend time on the continent of Antarctica and it was life-changing, so amazing. I mean, I took the plastic pledge, I'm not using plastic bottles anymore and just seeing an environment that is so free from any, anything, it's so clean and the air was amazing. I, I highly recommend it. You go to Alaska, up into Alaska twice, you see glaciers, right? This was like hour upon hour upon hour of glacier after glacier after glacier and mountains and just, just breathtaking, loved hiking and, and just my steps and, well, and penguins, had to watch out for the penguin highways, but just amazing. I learned so much, I've offered, I'm going to speak at the middle school, the TLC boys in the elementary school, sent them a postcard from there. So just really, really glad to be back, it was a long time away, but what a wonderful experience. So thank you for asking.
Absolutely. So excited and you said how enriched it was and a powerful experience that has changed your life.
Absolutely.
I thought it was worthwhile to just quickly ask.
Thank you. Always learning, right? We're always learning.
Yep. Thank you Superintendent for letting me deviate for a second.
Could I just respond to Kristin's report on the tiered focus monitoring?
Yes.
For one second, Mr. Brophy. I just, I really want to thank Kristin for taking the lead on the tiered focus monitoring. It, it really is something that when we find out that we need a, that we are on schedule for the tiered focus monitoring, I say to Kristin, this is too much for one person really to coordinate. And she says, I have it, I will do it. She does an amazing job. It is hours upon hours upon hours of work, just gathering documents to prove that we are complying. It's important, but it's a tremendously heavy lift and, you know, everyone in the district contributes, our principals contribute, but Kristin is really is the clearinghouse for all of those, all of those documents and I just really want to thank her. The, the final, I have to say, Kristin, I think you made the final meeting sound a little negative. I thought it was quite positive. There were a couple of tiny little things that they said, well, we may ask you to make a couple of little changes. It was very, very minor, in my opinion. So we will wait for the final report, but I, from my participation in that final interview, I think it was a huge success. And again, I just really want to thank Kristin for, for her leadership and, and, and taking us through that, time and time again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Director of Administrative Services.
Technology.
You wanted that technology?
Yes, if possible.
Yep, go right in.
I have a brief report. Mr. Marsh is going to inform you all about the security system later on, so I'm going to skip that for now. As Dr. Meyer said, the webpage is, we did go get over finally a major hurdle and that is the design of the webpage, which is really a lot of back and forth brainstorming between all of the departments and the company we're working with, where they give us their ideas, we give them what we think we should look like and then we meet and they show us what they thought our ideas looked like. And then we come back and say, well, we like this color here and we didn't like that button there and we need to move this over. there, and we need to move this over. And it's a lot of those meetings. And I will say, everybody on both sides was very patient in the fact that no one got upset with how many times we sent this thing back to make sure it looked exactly how we wanted to before we go off to a developer to start actually designing it. So we have gotten through that phase. It's now in the developer's hands that they are actually coding all of the pages. We're now starting to work with the different departments in the schools and in the central office to get all of the blurbs and all the links and all the content that we want loaded into that design. So we're going to be doing that on our end while they're creating the page. And then in late April, early May, we'll start putting all of that together into one uniform site. And that's, after that is when we will start to go live. So this is a big hurdle, but it was, it was definitely worth the effort, I think. As far as the tech department in general, this last month, we have closed 202 user tickets for a total of 1,857 for the year. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Could I just comment on the webpage too? I, again, I think the, the webpage has taken much longer than we had hoped, but it is going to be absolutely amazing. It looks great. I thank Andrew and Teresa Salvador, who have really been taking the lead on this. We've been super, super particular about every single detail so that when, because it's a big investment in time and, and an investment in money also, we really wanted it to be superb, and it will be. So we're really, we're very excited to, 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 you know, share it when it's ready. But again, it is, it's looking pretty good, so.
And Cheryl. So an article came across my desk from Education Week, and I believe it's in your drive for you to read. It's called, Schools Are Heading Into A Perfect Financial Storm. It's not really anything that you already haven't heard, but you're gonna hear it from other states and not just Dr. Muir and myself. There are actually 10 different states that are quoted in this article, and they're all saying the same thing. The federal money was good, it came all at once, we couldn't spend it on time, we couldn't get the vendors, because everybody was looking towards the same vendors to do the same work, and now it'll be gone, and how are we going to continue this good work that we have to do? So I thought that was, would be interesting for you to see. The Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services has certified the district's E and D at 1.575 million or 4.3%. I can't remember the last time it was lower than 2%, but that was part of our plan to not.
Be pledged.
To not be in the perfect storm and, at next year. So that was part of a plan that we started up two years ago. In Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Wall, Mr. supplied me with a lot of information, not really anything dramatic on here, so you can have that to read. Our school nutrition director, who actually has been out all week, was able to provide me with a small break, the, a small report while she was out. But the most important thing is, and it, and it doesn't appear to her that the president believes this, but we still have supply issue concerns in school lunch. You heard the girl speak about what's available, that's what we can get in. There still is a great supply issues. And if it's not supply issues, it's, you know, $40 lettuce. So we have some things that we still have to contend with. Also, we received word this week that the new proposed meal regulations may be coming out as soon as next year. Again, the director has been meeting with not only directors in Massachusetts, but across the country. Everybody is up in arms about this. What Carrie said to me, and I edited her words for my report, was instead of teaching kids about choices and how to eat healthy, they're taking everything away from them and leaving us with basically nothing to serve. So it's going to be, it's going to be difficult moving forward to be able to provide what we have in the past. She's also, we're very concerned that will school lunch be free next year? Massachusetts did extend it for the end of this school year, because the money was going to run out in March, I believe. But it has been procured to the end of the year, but next year, we don't know. We also have provided the average daily participation rate for lunch and breakfast in our schools. To date, $11,536 has been raised for the press box. It's been very active over the last week. We've been getting some significant donations this past week, and that was really nice to see. The grant report is what it was last year, last month, because we have not received, not received any new, probably Carrie telling me I put her report wrong. We have not received any new grants, monies this month, so nothing has changed there. Warrants for release, our payroll warrants bi-weekly, 15, 16, and 16 dot one, weekly 29 through 33, accounts payable 48H, 49A, 50A, and 51B. Also available in your portal are the financial reports as of December 31st, 2022, and later on the agenda, I'll be asking for a general fund budget adjustment report. Thank you.
And finally, there's a report from Mr. Myville regarding athletics of the, what he's highlighted there is, is a very nice event that was held last Friday for, it was a fundraising effort. Sort of little competition between the, the teams, basketball teams from 1973 and 1995. And there were some esteemed Quabin alum, along with Coach Mike Diamond, who many of you may remember, present for that event. It was wonder, it was a wonderful event. They raised quite a bit of money. And I think, you know, Cheryl's influx of donations really is in part because that, that was a major kickoff event for the fundraising efforts for the press box. Letters have gone out to local alumni and local businesses and they, the fundraising committee has decided that anyone who donates $500 or more will have their name on a very large plaque that will be on the back, back of the press, back of the bleachers facing the parking lot off Alumni Field.
What's the goal?
Well, the goal, we would, we would love to raise $100,000. We think the press box is going to be in the range of $300,000 for the full project. Though ultimately, and this is one of the things that we've been talking to the town officials as we've been going out to see them, you know, letting them know that we're fundraising and also letting them know that at some point in the future, we may be asking them to put a warrant article on their town meeting warrant for, to allow us to borrow to fund this project. So we will see if we can, if we can raise that kind of money. It's, it's been, it's been a little bit slow getting going. So we're hopeful that, that, you know, it will have a good faith effort that will, will demonstrate to the communities that we've really made an effort to try to fund some of this without asking them to, to foot the whole bill.
Right.
So.
But you said 300 for the press box. Aren't we doing something with the bleachers?
It's the whole project. So yes, Dr. Allen, the, the two center sections of the bleachers will be taken out, and they will put a 15 level bleachers, and then on top of that will be the press box. So the entire project, we believe, is in the range of 300,000. We haven't gotten an exact quote for, since prior to COVID. So we'll be, we'll be seeking that soon.
Thank you. Next item, Teacher Advisory Council.
I don't think Mr. Barringer is here tonight.
Okay.
He's coaching tonight.
Subcommittee reports. Administrative review, audit, none, budget.
We had a budget subcommittee, the first one, on January 24th. Started with the preliminary discussion on the budget. Dr. Muir kind of gave us an overview of the items that we need, should very preliminarily discuss the items to accomplish district's goals for next year. And then Cheryl gave us a much more in-depth look at the budget they presented. There's a lot of variables, as we know, at this time of year. So it's kind of our first look at what we'll need for next year. We reviewed the school enrollment figures, and as we know, the six collective bargaining groups are still going through negotiations. So that's an unknown figure for us at this time. There's numerous open positions due to retirement or resignation. So that's something that they're trying to fill sooner rather than later. So we'll have better numbers in that area as well. There's a number of capital requests in the budget at this time that, you know, as we move through the process, we'll have to see what we'll be able to keep in the budget and not. And the current preliminary budget total is $40,110,429, which is about a 10% increase over FY '23. So like I said, at this time with the unknowns, along with all of our costs, are, we still don't have any revenue source numbers yet. The governor's budget isn't out yet. We don't have all of those other things. So as we continue through the budget process, we'll get some more accurate numbers and make the adjustments as we go along.
Dr. Allen?
So if it's up 10%, that means that the town part would be up 20%, wouldn't it?
We didn't look at any assessment numbers yet. Like I said, there's so many variables that.
Well, I understand that. But what I'm saying at this point usually.
Yeah.
Because we, 10% for that means 20% for the town, because the state, state half doesn't go up any.
You know, this, without even having any revenue figures yet, it's kind of hard to predict. But based on, you know, what we need for next year, this is what the budget.
Is there a schedule? What's, what's the next, what's the timeline in regards to the budget process right now?
Cheryl, did we schedule the next?
We did, and we wanted to wait until we got the.
The governor's numbers.
Governor's budget before we had another meeting.
And those aren't due till March, but she indicated they may be out a little.
Yes, I thought it was going to be possibly a little earlier, maybe. We don't know what that early means.
Correct. She said, she made a statement to a Mass Municipal Association that she would release her local aid before she released her entire budget. But we're getting close, you know, to March 1st. So we don't know what early means, if it means a day or two early. It doesn't seem like it means several weeks early, because we're, we're sort of in mid-February now. So I don't know. I talked to Senator Gobi yesterday, and she didn't indicate that she thought we would get, she, she said the governor's numbers will be coming out the first week of March. So that made me wonder if there's been a change in that. You know, that was just a comment, we were, we were actually discussing another matter. But, so I don't know. But it will be by March 1st, I believe is her deadline. So, second. Thank you, Cheryl.
And have the towns scheduled town meeting or anything? Yet to know if we're backing into any particular schedule yet? Not yet?
Not that we know of.
Okay.
I, I mean, we, we, just as an example, when we met with Barry last week, they, they were, it was literally the first finance committee meeting.
They had.
That they were having. And so they were just beginning their own budget process here in Barry. So I think they're sort of on a slower timeline as well, just knowing that they're not going to have any revenue numbers as early as they typically do.
I think Hubbard stands in the same stage.
Hmm.
Thank you. I'm pointing out on that. No central office, collective bargaining?
Yes. We've begun bargaining with the negotiations with the QRTA. We set the ground rules and we agreed to the ground rules, and we had two formal negotiation sessions. We've got two more scheduled, both of which will be completed before the end of February, and the discussions are ongoing.
Thank you. Building and grounds?
Nothing at this time.
Policy review and reform?
Ah, yes. That's us. We talked about DECA already, so I don't think we need to go into that. Bullying prevention is, as was described, there's a word here and two words there, and that's about it. So I moved, we put that on the table to be bullied on at our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Sure, a second.
And further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, roll call.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. DeShamps?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
Discussion of school facilities use regulations. We didn't finish that one.
Okay.
I think as a committee, we feel strongly that the more public we can get in, the easier they can get in, the easier they can access without barriers that are impossible or very difficult, the better off we all are. And Cheryl did some nice work on doing background. We can't put it under our policy, we can't put a rider on, we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't. But Sheila had some ideas of ways, it's probably, I would say, we put ourselves at a little bit of a risk, but maybe we can do something. So we're going to have to have a meeting in March.
Okay.
The school curriculum still needs some more work, because I guess there's some fairly significant modifications they're looking at, which means some negotiations with the QRTA. And they wanted to hold finalizing that until they get the QRTA negotiations done and in general agreement. So we're going to have to have another meeting anyway. So Sheila and Cheryl are going to do some more headbanging.
Okay.
And see if we can't make what we had in front of us just a little bit more convenient and comfortable for town groups to come in, which I think all of us would agree is a good thing, if we can, if we can do it without putting ourselves too much at risk.
Sounds good. Okay.
So that's where we are on that one. The course program update, as I said, it's not listed here, but that was an item, and we're, we're holding off on that now. What I want to spend a little time on is the school improvement plans. We have two templates, and I assume everybody has these. And based on these, the elementary schools each have done theirs, and they're fairly consistent with a tweak here and a tweak there. I noticed Ruggles Lane, for instance, has a, has a slightly different way of listing out what they're doing, but they're getting to much the same, the same place. And there's four things that they're looking at. Quabin pride, academic growth, social emotional growth, and commitment to the community. They've dug in very nicely. They've done a very good job, and I commend them to all of you for taking some time to look through. Look through your elementary schools and look through the middle high schools. And it's probably worth just perusing the other elementary schools, too. There's significant work in this. They started last summer. And, and there were things in there that I didn't. For instance, do we have our high school principal on there?
Yes, she is.
Okay. They had, what's, what's that love thing you call, you had a name for the love?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Yes, what's the love thing? You had a something love.
Outrageous love, yes.
Outrageous love. Now that is an eye catcher. But that was one of the points that she put in here, that they're working on. Well, what is that? What does that mean? Well, it means when the kids come to school, at whatever level they are, you take them at that level, you. at that level, you accept them, you cuss at them, you try to educate them, uh, social mo, all, all that sort of thing, and bring them on up, which I thought was very, very interesting. I such, that's such an eye-catching way to get at that. That, that was nicely done. Well, at least it caught my eye. And there's, there's quite a bit in here. She talked, uh, Pranima talks about time with the teachers to help them relax and get comfortable so that they're then ready to, you know, take them, and then charge ahead. So, well, what do you, well, one of the ways is she was teaching them breathing. Take a breath in, hold it, and then breathe out for a little bit. And that seems to have made a difference, is my understanding. We talked about the various, uh, language arts and math skills in the elementary schools. And what we had has been modified, or I guess we have a new program, don't we?
We did.
We do. And Trish talked about that and from what it was to what it is now. And Pranima talked about, well, the kids coming up to the middle high school really seem to be fairly well-prepared. So that what our goal is, is working. So as I said, I, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, everybody here is a good reader. We know that. We used to have a high school principal, great guy, Sullivan, Leo. And he would read reports to us. And I would say, Leo, we can all read. You don't need to, give us the, give us the sort of the substance, give us the point. So anyway, I, I, I was going to follow my own advice on that one. But these are worth spending some time on. And if you want us to swing back through with review and reform, if you have some questions or some issues or whatever, we're going to be spending some time with the high school principal on what the new program is going to be, uh, March 5th, isn't it? First Monday in March?
Sixth day.
March 6th.
March, March 5th is March 6th for purposes of this meeting, but the first Monday. So that's what we had.
I'm going to ask to see what you think. We're, thank you for the work. This has been ongoing. It has to be documented, and one of the obligations of school committees is to approve the school improvement plan. It becomes a driving document, a living, breathing document that we evaluate and look and review. As you mentioned, you can have tons and tons of paper, or you can be highlighted, you review, what are the goals, what are the action steps? It drives the strategic plan, all those other pieces. It's part of the evaluation process of assessment. Not only is the state, and matter of fact, I believe I read an article in the Department of Ed, that in 22, 23, the Department of Ed was developing, um, support systems for school improvement plans and all that. So, and, and I think I know the answer, but if I ask the committee members, we're just getting them now, and they're outlined, and it has a 22 to 23, it's got 22 to 25 on the, on particular elementary schools. You have a meeting in March. That gives us time for it to review, to take a look. And if you have any questions, any comments, we can, because we do have to formally vote. So Dr. Allen mentioned going, having a meeting in March. I heard he said, well, take, take time, take a look. Do I want to circle around? I heard that phrase. So I'm asking the will of the committee, if you want to take the time to read, any other, that might be potential adaptation might occur? I don't know. I suspect not, but we do need to formally vote. So would you like your call, since it came out of the subcommittee?
I think we can vote on them now, but I would ask the superintendent, her opinion. We could always modify, if, if anybody has any comments or criticisms or updates or whatever, we can always modify them.
Correct.
So I think going ahead and doing it, it, it's a good job.
I, I, again, I, I don't know if committee members have a chance to review them, but I, I'm comfortable with you voting on it tonight, if you are comfortable voting on it tonight.
I make the motion. Second.
Any further comments in regards to, and we don't have to do, we can do them as a collective. We have to do each one, each school.
That's my motion.
We'll do as collective.
Yes.
So, any further comment, question regarding the school improvement plans presented this evening? Roll call?
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. DeShamps?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. And again, I know we'll have a part two with our training down the road as we continue to be an effective school committee and understanding shared governance. And when we had our training, Dorothy Pressa talked about the roles responsibilities. And one of those came right out very clear was the school improvement plans. So when the superintendent, and we chatted a while ago, and she said, we're working on it, we're doing the strategic plan, can you wait a bit? And the answer was, of course. And as Dr. Allen said, you can see with the work, the depth, the realities, and what the plans and goals are as we go forward. So I really do want to comment the work of the teachers, the principals, the staff, and the superintendent for everything you've done to make this happen.
That's a good job.
Hey, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Did I ask Dr. Allen a question?
You may.
What did you say about bullying policy, Dick?
About which policy?
Yeah. Bullying policy.
Oh, bullying is pro forma. When I first looked at it, I had a bit of a concern because it looked like it extended beyond the school. But if you look on page two, the, it, it's pretty well set. It says on school grounds, immediately adjacent, school-sponsored activities, programs on or off school, at functions of, you know, school bus stops, school buses, and the technology sorts of things. So I think it's just a word here or a phrase there, not very much. It's the pro forma kind of stuff that the lawyers basically come up with to justify their existence. It's my opinion.
It's more than that.
Mrs. Bennett is putting it on the screen if, if, if you would like, just to highlight the, um, the change, the recommended changes.
Well, we voted on it, didn't we?
We did.
Yes.
Did you have any more quest, other questions, Ned?
Not right now.
Okay.
Is that it, Dr. Allen?
Yes.
No problem, Ned. Student services?
Nothing more tonight, Mark.
Technology?
Uh, the only thing I have to report is with the camera system, um, I heard that from Mr. Clark, and, uh, there's a small change order being processed to add and move a few of the cameras so they have better access. They have not received any dates on when those will, will come in, so, and that's it. Besides the webpage.
The webpage is just, yeah, rolling out and, uh, ad hoc school district configuration?
Uh, we haven't had any, uh, any meetings, and, um, everybody is so busy right now, I think we're kind of backverted on, on what we might want to do. So maybe once things slow down a bit in a month or two, hopefully, uh, we can get together.
Okay. Superintendent's search, committee?
We have met twice since our last meeting. First meeting was January 19th, and you and Lee were kind enough to come and provide us with an overview of the past searches that we've had and how they were run, and all the documents that you used to go along with those. And then we discussed the district profile, the superintendent's job description, the different search options, which was all included in the packet. So you provided us with a lot of good material to get us kind of started. And, um, we also discussed that the school committee could hire an interim if necessary because the timeline, as we know, is pretty tight. But our goal is still to try to have a superintendent in place for July 1st or as close to...
Or thereafter, right?
Hopefully, so we'll see. So that was kind of our first preliminary meeting to kind of just get all the information and understands the task before us. So then we held another meeting on February 2nd, and we started that by reviewing the superintendent's job description. And you had given us a lot of examples, and so we had a lot of information that we were kind of trying to talk out. And it seemed to be a lot more to take on, that we may need some guidance from the outside firm to help us put it all together. We liked bits and pieces from a lot of them. So we decided to kind of table that discussion at that meeting, at that time, and move on to, more importantly, the RFQ, which is the document that Cheryl had to post and request three quotes for us to put together the criteria to choose an outside consultant to help us with the search. So we reviewed the drafts that Cheryl had put together, and we went through all the items, and we had a lot of discussion about each item because it's very important, the procurement system is, with this type of cra, the criteria that we fall under for this purchase, type of purchase contract, we have to by law go by, with the lowest bidder. So we needed to be very specific in our wording to make sure that we're going to get exactly what we're looking for. So, um, it was kind of a long meeting, and we did go through each one. And, um, so that RFQ was posted on Monday, February 6th, and the closing date will be Wednesday, February 15th. So it's kind of a short timeline, but, um, we really felt that that should be sufficient time for these companies to be able to get their quotes together into us. So we've scheduled our next meeting on Thursday, February 16th at seven o'clock to review the quotes and, um, determine our next steps and see who the lowest bidder is and what results of the RFQR at that time. So next Thursday, we'll hopefully have, have a company on board and begin the process.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, I assume if the lowest bid is not satisfactory to us, we can always reject it.
I don't think so.
Cheryl?
You can always, you can always cancel a bid if, if it's detrimental to the district. We only get one or two bids, you've got to reject the whole process. You can't reject that one bidder.
Yeah, that's what I was...
We would go back out again.
You have to go back, okay.
Yeah.
So we feel pretty good that we kind of have all the criteria in there, and we'll be able to get some good organizations to work with us and help us through this process.
And again, thank you for the members that, well, Walter, go ahead.
Well, I do have kind of a cautionary tale. My daughter, and I like to brag about my daughter, she's a high school principal up in Vermont, very small, like, middle high school, about the size of Ruggles Lane. And, uh, she's been out of three years. And, uh, she was at a high school basketball game last week, and some guy came up to her. He said he's from Hinsdale, New Hampshire, about 40 miles away. And he said, um, "We're really having a hard time finding a superintendent, and we'd like you to apply to be our superintendent." And, um, you know, it kind of speaks to, you know, my, my daughter right away said, "No, I'm not ready for that." She doesn't have the credentials. But, um, you know, it just kind of illustrates how hard it is right now to find superintendents. This guy would go all the way over there, you know? He said very nice things about my daughter, but, um, in the end, yeah, she wasn't going to do that. But, you know...
She interested for down here?
Makes me worry a little bit about, you know, how successful we'll be, but, you know, we have our fingers crossed, so.
I just wanted to follow up to say thank you for the, the, uh, the school committee members that volunteered. And at that time, we didn't have a, um, a Hardwick representative. And, um, Deb with her, uh, I spoke with Deb about a week ago, and she mentioned, you know, I'd like to try to reach out, you know, for potential opportunity for a Hardwick representative. Emily was able to. So I know when we asked a month ago, anybody who was on, we had, we, we did offer everybody. So, um, when I heard that, there was no exclusion. We're not an exclusion type bunch of folks. So an added member is wonderful to be part of it. And as you guys are working through this, and I don't mean guys that way, but as you are working as a team through it expeditiously, as we need to go the steps and back and get those dates what we need to. So, thank you, Emily. I wanted to publicly say that. Public comment? Oh, wait a minute. Unfinished business. FY 23 budget adjustment. Sorry.
I mentioned earlier that the second quarter financial reports were in your drive, but I also have a budget adjustment request for tonight. Other than legal services in our special ed area, our budget is right on, on point for this year, but I would like to request that we move $10,000 from district administration and legal in undesigned and regular education down to special education to cover the current deficit and leave a $5,000 balance there.
So moved.
As stated, okay. Any further comment? Roll call?
Would you like me to wait until Dr. Allen returns?
I can vote for him.
Yeah, we could wait.
Right next to him.
We, we could wait. Cheryl, is there something else that you want to comment on before?
No.
Okay. Um, we'll wait for Dr. Allen for the vote on that. If we don't mind, is there any public comment?
I don't see any, anyone in the virtual part of the meeting that has a comment.
Um, we'll go to the next item. School committee concerns, the only thing I'd like to, which is okay to pause at this moment. Ned, are you still, are you there, Ned?
Yes.
Ned?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, I just wanted to say that I was formally in my packet this evening, received a copy of the letter of your resigning, of your resigning effective April 10th. So as we're waiting for Dr. Allen to return for a vote on this, I'd like to say, you know, I know that you, you sent the letter to the town perspective, and thank you for, as, as you were notifying your colleagues, I just wanted to make a quick comment and say, under school committee concerns, thank you for your years of service. Thank you for returning when nobody stood, nobody, uh, put their name in for representation for Hardwick. Was it last year or two years ago?
Sometime ago.
I'm trying to help you, you know? How many years you been on?
Somewhere over 40.
Okay. So although I just wanted to think publicly, thank you not only for your service, we see you around, we run into you, um, your perspective of saying you've had 40 years, and it's time for other folks to participate and be involved. Am I correct?
Yep.
Is there any else you'd like to comment? And I hope I didn't embarrass or say anything I shouldn't, but, um, your years of service, your expertise, your work on building and grounds, and everything else that you've brought to the, uh, school committee over the years, has not only been noted, it's been reflected, and it, it has been, uh, recognized as a member of the community with high esteem and tremendous public trust to be involved in a school committee district for so long. So I want to just say thank you.
And I'd like to say I've enjoyed almost all the time I've been on. Well, actually, I have. I've enjoyed, we've been very fortunate with the administration we've had, the people we've had. We never fight. We never fight. People show up when they're supposed to, and it's different than a lot of school committees. So I've been very fortunate, and I think I'm leaving at a time when the school committee's strong still, and it's still good, and I think there'll be somebody coming in who's going to take my place. So good luck.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent colleague.
Yes. And thank you for letting me just quickly do that as we're waiting for Dr. Allen to return. He has returned, and we have a motion on the floor in regards to a budget adjustment. Um, do we need to rid back? Are we all set?
We're all set.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Willen?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cardia?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Nutter?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Any other school committee concerns? Yes, sir.
So Sheila, so going back to earlier this evening, what, what is the deal on clubs and the, and the flex block? Anything be done, or are we stuck, stuck on, for whatever reason, Friday's the only day, pretty much? Or?
Well, um, we have, um, tried to create a schedule of clubs and activities that will allow them to take place on Fridays, but on alternating Fridays. Um, we have a flex block teacher leader, uh, her name is Sherry Burkle, and we have a flex block committee, and that's really one, been one of the discussions that we've been having this year, is how to create as many opportunities for students to have diverse, um, opportunities for participation in clubs, um, while still, um, maintaining the integrity of the primary purpose for the flex block. So, but flex block is used on Fridays for clubs and activities, on Wednesdays for, uh, social emotional learning lessons, and on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays for students to get access to teachers for extra help and tutoring and those types of things. The, as the, um, students mentioned, on Tuesdays, we have the, they're not really clubs, but they're leadership opportunities, and so, uh, like, some of the ROTC, um, activities happen on Tuesdays, National Honor Society, those types of things, I think student government. It is a re, it is a real challenge for us to, because of the geographic size of the district, for us to create, um, all of the opportunities that our students need within the school day. But it's also an equity issue if we don't, if we don't attempt to do that. When I was a student here, as Mr. Haley described, at his high school, we had late buses, uh, two and three tiers of late buses. And so you could stay after for an hour, you could stay after for an hour and a half, or you could stay after for two and a half hours. And wouldn't it be nice if we could afford to do that? The last time we had late buses that were available for students, for several years, we had to cut our late buses back to one late bus that go, that went to the center of each town, and then students had to be transported from the center of their town to home. That's a little bit of a help to parents, but it really doesn't create equitable access to after-school activities. So it's our best attempt to, um, accomplish all that we need to accomplish in that limited amount of time. So I think, you know, it's something we are watching, we're working on, we're trying to balance, um, those activities so that not all clubs meet every single Friday, and some clubs may meet, um, for part of the school year, but not the entire school year. So the beekeeping club is an example of a club that may not meet, um, maybe in the dead of the winter, but they're meeting more in the spring and the fall. And so we're really trying to make the faculty aware of some of the challenges, challenges that having clubs run every single week create, and, and Sherry Burkle, who is our flex block, um, teacher leader, is really spearheading that and creating the schedule. So I think it's much more organized and, and, um, consistent this year than it has been in the past, which in some ways may have limited the student opportunities, because I do think what they described as, you know, some clubs would happen on Tuesdays and some would happen on Wednesdays and Thursdays, um, was the case in the past. But I also think that the faculty would likely say that some students maybe were choosing to go to a club and not necessarily get the extra help they needed on those days. So we've, we've tried it this year with, you know, sort of days dedicated to clubs, days dedicated to extra help, and days dedicated to SEL, and we will continue to, you know, evaluate that, monitor, evaluate, and evaluate it. It's wonderful to have students that want to be involved in so many things, but, um, it is reality that they sometimes have to make choices about what they're involved in. And I do think that the, that the club advisors are very willing to, as Mr. Haley described, you know, have a student join the club on a part-time basis just because they know that it is challenging for students. The student does not get the full experience, there's no question, but I think the advisors try to be as flexible as possible to make that happen. So I don't think there's a, 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 an ideal solution to that, but we are aware of it, and we're, we're watching it.
Any other school committee concerns? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.
Second?
Yep.
Good evening, adjourned.